Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of Monday, November 3, 2025, in the McCoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on local cable, Channel 8 and 1072. Stream live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov/CHAN-8. It's 6:00 PM and we'll convene an open session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And would you please join me for a moment of silence for those experiencing food insecurity, Thank you. I'm sure you all had an opportunity to review the draft minutes of the October 6 regular session meeting and the October 20 regular session joint meeting with the Finance-
Six.
Yep.
There was a motion on the contract for agriculture-
Good catch.
That is a good catch.
Other than that, I would motion we approve with that fixed.
You probably have to have that-
Could someone have a second, right?
Yeah, I probably just missed it. I can go back to my notes, but I'm sure there was.
We can also go back to the recording and clarify that for you, Madam Chair.
But could we approve with that change being made? Is there a second?
Second.
Are you doing both of them or one at a time?
I was doing both of them. Do you want to do one at a time?
The only other item I had was on the joint meeting with the Finance Committee on the 20th.
What page?
It's the single-
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
That top question was brought by Mr. McKelvey. And I guess for consistency, the other meetings typically capture who framed the comment. So I just didn't know if we should add that. It does go on to identify the moderator as responding and such, so.
I'm sorry, I don't-
This one here.
Okay.
That was raised by McKelvey.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So I'd motion to amend the motion. Did we have a second?
Yes, Tracy seconded.
All right. That would be an additional amendment to the motion.
Want to do one off?
I can amend my motion to put a correction on Page 6 in the name of the person answering the question on the Finance Committee.
Okay. That's the motion? Second. Any other discussion? Okay, Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Public comment for current agenda items. Is there any for current agenda items? Okay. So we will move to the 6:05 PM fiscal year 2026 tax classification hearing with Mr. Joseph Gibbons, our assessor. And do you want to read? I think we-
Are we still going to hear from Joe or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Due to a lack of data, I recommend we postpone the- we open the hearing and then postpone the hearing till two weeks from tonight at 6:05, which would be the 17th of November.
So you'd be asking for a continuance?
Yes.
Okay. But we're going to open the public hearing?
But you have to open the hearing.
Town of Mashpee Public Hearing Notice. Under Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended by Chapter 369 of the Acts of 1982 and Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983, Mashpee Select Board will conduct a public hearing on whether the Town of Mashpee should implement Classification Act. As said hearing, the Select Board will hear testimony as of what will be the fiscal year 2026 residential factor, which will determine the share of taxes each classification of property will pay. What will be open space factor and whether there will be a residential exemption and/or a small business exemption. Said hearing will be conducted on Monday, November 3, 2025, at 6:05 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Please direct any questions and comments to the select board at mashpemas.gov or contact the office of the Town Manager of the Select Board at 508-539-1401.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Mary Wagan?
Hi. So you're going to continue it to a different time, right? We'll be able to make comments at that time?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to reserve my comments until then. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other comments? Is there a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move that the fiscal year 2026 tax exemption hearing for the- to be postponed- hearing to be postponed to the next scheduled Select Board meeting on Monday, November 17. Correct, yeah, at 6:05 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you then.
And we're going to go to conference. And I haven't done this, how will I know they're with us?
Ask if they're on.
Are you on the line?
Yes, Robin was on the line.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's open- let's open the public hearing.
Okay, Town of Mashpee Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Town of Mashpee Select Board will conduct a poll hearing on petition W-0 number 1A7K PG-4M dated September 16, 2025, from Verizon, New England, and N-Star Electric Company dealing business as EverSource Energy to install one new utility pole numbered PSA approximately 35 feet west of pole P5 on Quaker Run Road near the address of 31 Quaker Run Road. Quaker Run Road. This pole is necessary to continue to support permanent power at the request of the resident located at 31 Quaker Run Road. Said hearing shall take place Monday, November 3, 2025, at 6:10 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. You may submit any questions or comments via email or select board@mashpemas.gov prior to the hearing or by contacting the office directly at 508-539-1401.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Town Manager, please.
Madam Chair, the DPW Director had no concerns with the poll moving.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions among the board? Are there questions from the public? Okay. Is there a motion?
I approve the request by EverSource.
N-Star.
Opening address on 31 Quaker Run Road. Excuse me, you have to close-
We have to close. Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Second.
Second, sorry about that.
Mike? To close the public hearing? Is a motion?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Now I'll do my motion and do it. Approve the poll request for 31 Quaker Run Road.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Madam Chair, you can hang out there.
Thank you. Okay. All right. And we-
We're a little early, but it's up to you.
We are just a couple of minutes early.
Start reading.
I think so, please.
We could defer to the treasurer because it's not quite 6:15 yet.
Thank you.
What you have in front of you is from the Town Bond Council. It is for $50 million zero percent temporary loan from the SRF. This is a portion of the $96.1 million Phase II sewer project. The SRF needs you to make a motion in the packet so that it's in the packet, so the town has access to the Phase II temporary loan at zero percent. Plan is for the loan to become permanent in February of 2027, with first repayment coming in February of 2028. Before I read the motion for you to vote on, I assume you want me to read it unless you want to read it, selectmen cotton.
You have it.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
We don't have the- we don't have the motion in front of us. I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else does.
The motion's pretty-
Please.
Sorry. Okay, so you're going to vote that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million pursuant to Chapters 29(c) and 44 of the general laws and a vote of the town passed May 6, 2024, Article 4, and excluded from the limitations of Prop. 2.5 so-called by the vote of the town passed May 11, 2024, Question 1, for planning construction of sewers and other water pollution control abatement infrastructure, the project. That in the terms of the financing agreement or agreements and the project regulatory agreement or agreements, each relating to the notes and bonds that are hereby approved, that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes from time to time in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered as a security and sold to Massachusetts Clean Water Trust at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement or agreements. That the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate and principal maturities of each bond and note and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form, and maturities, and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by the majority of the board's selectmen and the treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. That any certificates and documents relating to each bond and notes collectively documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of the signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to the document. And signature- electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. That all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and that the treasurer and the appropriate- other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution, delivery of the financing agreement or agreements, and the pregnant- project regulatory agreement or agreements relating to the project.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you. They'll be- they have documents for you to sign at the end.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Town of Mashpee Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Pursuant to Mass. General Law 138, Section 15a, the Select Board acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the applications to change the class from seasonal to annual license for the following establishments: Concert New Seaberry LLC DBA, The Lore of Pompaneset, Concert New Seaberry LLC DBA, Pompaneset Inn, Concert New Seaberry LLC DBA, New Seaberry Athletic Club, and Pool. Said hearing will be held Monday, November 3, 2025, at 6:15 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. You may submit any questions and comments via email to selectboard@mashpemas.gov or prior to the hearing by contacting the office directly at 508-539-1401.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. Could you just introduce yourselves, please?
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Posano from Upton, Connel, and Devlin, Council for the Licensees. With me is Sean Mosman. He is the Manager of Record at The Lore of Pompaneset, Pompaneset Inn, and the Athletic Club. There are three applications before you for the three separate licenses to change them from seasonal to annual. The reason being is they want to be able to hold their events and not be restricted to just the seasonal months. And that's really the only change here. All operations will remain the exact same. We're just hoping to just make this a full-year license. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Town Manager.
The only question that I have is, are the plans going to be to close down any of these locations for 30 days or longer? Because if that's the case, this generally would not be approved.
Thank you.
I don't believe- are you- do you guys open?
Currently, the Pompaneset Inn is closed from Columbus Day through mid-April, and then The Lore is similar. The hope is though that we could be able to do functions at these events through the off-season.
I guess my point is if the intent-
They can't be closed for 30 days.
Was to open, let's say, around February, then you'd be closed for longer than 30 days. And obviously, you would not be entitled to get a one-day license.
I think the plan is-
Please.
I think the plan is to be open without those breaks. And for whatever reason, if there are, we can revisit it. But the plan right now is to be able to be open for 12 months of the year.
During- so you'll be open all winter without a 30-day interruption at any time?
Yeah, I mean, they want to be able to hold events if there's like one-off events in, you know, February, January, whatever those off-season months are. To say they'll be open 30 consecutive in those months, I'm not sure if that's the exact plan. We can get more clarification on that from corporate, but.
I guess- I guess what I'm hearing is if it's- the intent is to remain open, do you currently have booked events that would address the issue of if it's normal to close, you know, for that period of time? Do you have scheduled events now that would break that up so you don't have-
Yeah, currently, we don't have any scheduled events because we're not actively selling the property during that time period. We'd just like to be able to sell the property during that time period, but without a license, we're not going to- we're not going to sell it.
I guess the workaround would be to-
Hold events.
Advertise. And then if you had at least something, then you wouldn't have that break. But I think our hands are tied per Town Manager's comments that without booked events, it's tentatively scheduled to close for more than 30 days. So I think our hands are tied until-
I don't think we can book events until we would know that we would be able to.
I was going to- for clarity, is that an ABC regulation? 30 days, a state regulation?
Right. We saw this, or I should say I saw this, and that was a concern that I raised earlier today, and we did-
I believe we can give notice. I believe the AB- I could be mistaken, but I believe the ABCC allows the licensee to give the town notice if they're not going to sell for 30 days. I could be mistaken, but I feel like I remember that being.
So what ABCC said is if it's a two-week vacation or something along those lines, like sometimes we've had an establishment come in and specifically request a suspension or a shutdown in order to do some sort of maintenance or renovation. And the board has approved that historically. I've never seen the board, at least in 20 years, to my knowledge-
Just for like a winter.
-shut down for longer than 30 days without a scheduled plan. Because it's not really an annual, it's a seasonal.
Seasonal. John, did you?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thought would be is maybe if we suspend- hold off on the- you keep the hearing open, and then maybe between now and maybe our next meeting or two, you can come back with, you know, if your intentions are basically, from what I understand, is you have to have some type of an event every 30 days, right?
We can work with them and come back to the board, but I certainly would not be comfortable recommending that this be approved based on past history and based on the guidelines that we're accustomed to. Because I know, Madam Chair, you're all about process. I am not aware of anything that's been approved along these lines.
So-
Thank you.
My thought would be if we- if we keep the public hearing open, if the board is agreeable, you have a couple of weeks to go back, you have three operations to go back and say, do you- can you have a plan with saying that you will operate this, you know, every 30 days at all three facilities? And if not, if you can't tell us that, then maybe one or two or three, we'll keep it seasonal. Just an op- just an opportunity.
Okay. Was this- this club before it became concert, before the ownership changed, did they ever have an annual license at this location?
Not for these locations, I don't think.
No? Okay. Okay.
It's always been the winter. I mean, like a lot of things on Cape, just-
Yeah.
And in addition to what you're saying, I think they would need to come back with booked events, not the intention to book. So specifically booked events to show that we know that it's going to not be closed for 30 days.
A business, they can't book-
Yeah.
They can't book an event without having a license. That's illegal. You know?
Yeah.
They can't book and say, yeah, we're going to be open because they don't have a license to be open.
We don't want to put them in breach of any contracts that they book for events if they can't legally serve.
I mean, if their intention, if, I mean, from what I'm hearing, I mean, I would be- I personally would be okay with if you came back with, you know, and maybe it's only two facilities that you can say, this is- this can be the case, but we have intentions to- and that could be a team building event. It can be whatever, but you got to use the facility every 30 days.
That is the intent. I mean, we don't have a specific events planned, but that's the intent because that's why we applied for this.
Yeah, but again, you're saying the intent, he's not sure about, I just think if you- we can leave the public hearing open-
Solid plans.
And then you can come back with, be on the same page-
You can open and just go back and get together.
With your intentions.
Set some events and come back.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. That sounds good.
Or don't set any events and keep it seasonal. It's all your choices.
Understood.
And you have three different license or permits that you can consider, so maybe it's one or two and-
Yep.
Maybe pick some charitable events just for the sake of booking events.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
When is your next public hearing? Do you know when that's scheduled for us? We can-
We meet again on November 17, and then I believe on December 8.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll be back November 17 if it's possible, if that's okay.
We've got to get a notice out, though.
Well, what we'd have to do is-
Continuing.
What can we continue? We'd have to do a similar to what we did with the assessor, is just continue the public hearing.
Yes.
So they don't have to re-advertise to all of that.
Right. We already opened it, so.
Yes.
So you're going to continue it.
Yeah. I just need a date and time.
So would you be okay with the 17th?
Yeah, that's fine.
Madam Chair, would you accept our motion to?
I'd like to hear if there are any public comments first. Are there any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none? Yes.
So, motion to keep the public hearing open and reschedule, let's see, 6?
Until the next meeting?
6:15?
Wow.
Oh.
Tax classification? I want to be real.
6:30.
That's what I was saying, 6:30.
6:30, please.
So November 17, 6:30?
Is your motion?
It's my motion.
Is there a second? Okay. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give it a few weeks. Thank you so much.
Old business. New business. Certification of hiring process for two entry-level police officers, Dylan Hutchenreider and Evan Eisenhower.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is just for the board to certify that the process has been completed and it complies with all policies and procedures governing the town and its hiring practices.
I actually have a question, and I'm- it's just, as I was looking, reading through this, and I was looking at the process and the ranking of the candidates, and the first candidate doesn't show up on the list. Was it that the first candidate expressed that he wasn't interested?
I don't know if there was a background issue or what the issue was. I don't know.
Okay. But this is correct as written, as presented?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had one, a couple of questions also. In the second stage of the oral board examination, some of the standardized questions that are asked were, are they rated on appearance, training, communication skills, judgment, poise, pride, motivation, responsibility, general knowledge, and overall fitness for the position? I guess I'm not really understanding pride and motivation, like how do you rate that? And what's kind of, how do you frame that? Is it a question or?
I think, although I don't want to speak for the chief or the command staff that was serving on the oral board, in terms of the pride factor, I think it's related to commitment and dedication to the Town of Mashpee and to the department in representing it with a sense of dignity so that we can all be proud of who the officers are. In terms, what was the other issue?
Motivation.
Motivation, that's just simple work ethic. You want somebody who is ambitious. You want somebody who is a self-initiated person rather than the person that might just be sitting back and waiting for a call for service and doing nothing more. Because being proactive, particularly in that field, results in effective results. So generally speaking, when somebody is subjected to an oral- So generally speaking, when somebody is subjected to an oral board process, it is consisting of command staff or supervisory staff officers who are not only well-trained, but they're also experienced in the field in regards to searching for those qualities, not just the basic knowledge, skills, and abilities to do the job, but I think the town of Ashby, speaking of pride, takes pride in picking a person that's a cut above the rest and who is going to do an excellent job and excel over the number of years and is here for a career and hopefully not just here for a short stop.
I think that's the only kind of, that was just for general awareness. I didn't take issue with the process at all. I just didn't fully understand that. I guess the only other question I had was, I guess the background check would provide insight into if anybody had any infractions to previous employment?
Yes, sir. So essentially, what generally occurs has been, in the past historically, is a written exam, physical agility exam, and a oral board, a group that goes to the chief of police for an appointing authority interview. Once that interview is completed, the individual is given what is typically referred to as a conditional offer. Again, it's conditional if they're not certified because then they've got to go to the academy, which is typically now around six months, and then they're the full-fledged police officer, and then they have to go through a field training officer's program, and after they complete that, which is about eight to 10 weeks or 12 weeks, then they have a 12-month probation. And once they complete that, then.
Then they file for social security because they have to retire.
And then hopefully, they, hopefully, they've decided that this is a career. The only thing that's different in other states, which I think Massachusetts should do, but they do not, for some reason, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts doesn't do it. This is just a personal opinion, and I could be in the minority. I think any police recruit should be subjected to a pre-employment polygraph. I was in New Hampshire, and I think they should be in Massachusetts, and for some reason, Massachusetts does not allow pre-employment polygraphs administratively otherwise for police officers, and I think it's a mistake.
Is that just at the federal level?
What's that?
Is that just for federal?
It's just for Massachusetts.
So municipalities?
Yeah.
They don't, okay.
Yeah. I think if you're going to give a badge and a gun to a person to be a police officer who's responsible for searches, seizures, arrests, et cetera, use of force, whether it be non-deadly or deadly, they should be subject to a polygraph before their appointment. So if you're ever speaking to a state legislator, you can, you can be welcome to share my opinion.
I think it was nice to also see that, you know, both individuals were somewhat local. One was actually a product of Ashby, and that's, that was nice to see.
Is there a motion for, to approve the certification of hiring process for two entry-level police officers, Dylan Hutchenreider and Evan Eisenhower?
So moved?
Second.
Request of membership change from full at-large member to associate member for Alexandra Zolo for the Conservation Commission.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
So they're just stepping back into a?
This was something she chose to do, just based on her personal commitments and workload and.
Was it workload?
Family responsibilities. She chose to make this transition.
Right. Tracy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure. I didn't, when I read the letter, I didn't get that it was the workload, so I'm sorry.
Are you okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second, correct? Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes. Am I allowed to make a comment after we?
I think, make a comment and then vote.
Okay. I just want to, I remember what I wanted to talk about is that something shared just around the capacity and the overall commitment and time, and so I just, while accepting this, would want to maybe check in on, like, workflow or kind of, you know, be as support as we can. We certainly don't want to lose commitment or talent due to the amount of work or the nature of the work, just because it is hard to find people that are really passionate and excited about, you know, whatever the given topic is for a committee, board, or commission.
Yes. Okay. And I'm a yes. Discussion of submission of letter of support for House Bill H. 4082, seeking to change the current non-refundable Title V septic tax credit to a refundable Title V septic tax credit.
Madam Chair, I think you missed one on the executive.
I did. Let me come back to the executive. Thank you. So we received, I received an email from Jonathan Kaufman, who is a member of the Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee, about this House bill. And essentially, what's happening right now, as we know, it's, it's really a challenge for many of our residents to be able to afford to pay for hookups to the sewer. And one of the things that's really been an advantage to them, to many people, is that there's a tax credit of up to $18,000, paid over four years for costs, up to 60% of your hookup charges. So that combined with the Aqua Fund made a real difference for people. Unfortunately, what many people are finding is that Massachusetts tax credit works very well if you're paying that much into Massachusetts state tax. But if you're a working, low-income or middle-income family, oftentimes you're not receiving the benefits of that. So what this would do is to change, this bill submitted by David Viera, would change the tax credit to a tax refund.
Yeah.
So are there questions or any discussion?
I think it's wonderful, and it's more supportive to working-class families.
I too like it, only because, like, if you're investing in upgrading your septics and things, it's only good for the environment and giving a credit for that and acknowledging that kind of, you know, financial strain on them, offsetting some of their costs. I like it the way it's framed, myself.
So we need to, if we're going to, as a board, support this, we need to submit written comments, or that's one way, the best way to support it, is to submit written comments through November. And those will, letters of support will aid with the Joint Committee on Revenue, which will decide mid-December whether the bill progresses along the legislative route. So do we need a vote or just?
Wouldn't we ask the town manager to send a letter of support?
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Any more discussion? Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Let's go back to discussion of authorization for chair to review, approve, and release executive session minutes on behalf of the select board.
If I could, Madam Chair, I just want to remind the board of an existing policy, policy 034. Currently, under your policy, declassification of executive session meeting minutes. Working with the chair, staff shall, at reasonable periodic intervals, conduct a review of executive session minutes in accordance with the following guidelines. Staff shall at the end of each quarter review all executive session meeting minutes of the board. The minutes, along with the comments, will be forwarded to the chair for a final determination as to whether said minutes warrant continued nondisclosure in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 22. If the chair is unable to make this determination based upon his or her review of said minutes and comments, the minutes will be forwarded to town council for further review and recommendation. Upon determination that any executive session meeting minutes shall be declassified, such determination shall be announced at the board's next meeting, and such announcement shall be included in the minutes of that meeting. That policy is already in existence, so we're just looking for a minor change in guidance for the chair to be able to take a look at the prepared executive session minutes.
What's the specific modification? I'm sorry.
Well, instead of bringing everything back to the board and having to go into executive session, the chair would be authorized to review and then to approve, and then they would be subsequently released.
So that's not the correct, I understood it to be that was the policy, but that's not the current policy?
No. Right now, I believe you're all reviewing executive minutes, and in the end, if that's what you want to continue to do, that's fine, but on the advice of council, we may want to review executive minutes in executive session because we should not be discussing these in open public. That's the issue.
I think, John, what you're confused about a little bit is the fact that that's the policy as we like to have it done and should have had it done, but it has been coming before the whole board for executive review. It's not necessary, it's not something that should be done.
So allowing the chair to at their discretion?
It's allowing the chair to through that policy.
And it's not unique to this town. Other towns are doing it, but because of the practice that we have been following, I just want clarity because obviously, this is a fairly new board, and I just want to make sure that you all have an opportunity to absorb it and to decide whether you want to continue as is or whether you want to defer to the chair. If you want to continue to do it as is, that's fine, that's what we're going to do. However, I think you need to be prepared for further executive session discussions because we should not be discussing the executive session minutes in open session. That's my only point.
Right.
So the request is to, you know, is to allow the chair, at their discretion, to approve the release of executive session minutes going forward?
Because at this point, hypothetically, let's say we had an executive session, and I won't name any topics, let's just say we had an executive session, a legal executive session. And subsequently, the minutes get brought before the board, and you feel that, for whatever reason, something needed to be modified or corrected. We should not be discussing that in open session, we should be discussing that in executive session. Until such time that those minutes are released. So then the question becomes the process of releasing the minutes if the minutes are not approved. So again, do you wish to do it collectively in executive session, or do you want the chair to review it? It's totally up to you.
I guess for me, having some sort of legal opinion to, as to when they no longer pose, it doesn't rise to the level, that kind of recommendation, I think, would be helpful for the chair, so the chair's not just making their own interpretation.
He said it at the beginning. He said.
Yeah, we wouldn't not inform the chair what the advice is. Generally speaking, like hypothetically, if it was pending litigation, if the litigation was no longer pending, then we would say, let's release.
I think the chair would want support of the board anyways before the decision's made, right?
Exactly.
I would think.
I guess I see.
We would always get a legal opinion.
Two different issues are, you know, approval of the minutes, which typically is done following, at the, you know, next meeting before subsequent meetings, and then the release is a separate action.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of.
We're just talking about the release of.
Right. And all I'm pointing out is, instead of coming in a session open to the public and approving executive minutes, we would be saving that for last and going into executive session. If that's what you wish to do.
So the question is basically, do we want to continue to go into executive session to approve the minutes as we have been doing, or do we want to enable the chair to approve them with council?
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't think we've always been going into executive session to approve. That's my point.
Okay.
So rather than putting you in a position where you can't really discuss the minutes because they're not disclosable yet, for whatever reason, that they were originally protected, the choice is wait until an executive session at the end of your meeting or defer to the chair, but we're still going to wait until legal counsel says they're no longer in need of being protected for whatever reason.
My, my preference would be to continue to have the board as a whole meet in a brief executive session to approve minutes.
I would agree with that.
I have to agree.
I agree with that. And then, secondly, to add to that, the release of said approved executive session minutes, I would be okay with allowing the chair, as long as it's recommended, not needing further legal counsel.
Right.
To have authority to release the minutes.
And that's done anyway.
Executive session minutes.
That's done anyway.
That's done anyways.
Okay.
Okay. That's easy.
So do you need, do you need a motion and a second and a vote, or?
I think I got a consensus, and this is being recorded, so I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. The next is discussion of SNAP, the Supplemental Nutritional Program, its potential impact, the discontinuation or the pause in that, the impact on that on Ashby residents. I asked for this to be put on the agenda so we could have a discussion about local impact. We're looking at a pause in SNAP or a reduction, temporary reduction in SNAP benefits, at the same time that we're looking at many local level, local workers being frilled out. So people experiencing an interruption in pay at the same time as benefits are being held. So this actually couldn't come at a worse time for our local food banks, it's coming right before the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. And the reason I've asked to have this put on is, I know the Chamber of Commerce is in full swing, we have an amazing Chamber of Commerce, they're working to address that, and I'm going to ask Tracy as liaison to speak about what they're doing in just a minute. What I'm hoping this board. What I'm hoping this Board could vote to authorize, or to vote to do, is to authorize the Town Manager to use available resources, say that a police vehicle or a van, when needed, to help with the delivery of food when appropriate at the Town Manager's discretion. That would be, I think, a real help to the local food bank, perhaps the Council on Aging, as we're dealing with this issue as a community. But Tracy, do you want to talk about what the Chamber's doing, because they're doing amazing, amazing stuff?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to put a couple of extra resources to, from the Mashpee Public Schools after that as well. So there are a couple of things that the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce is doing proactively to support this SNAP hold or possible reduction in benefits. They're organizing a community food drive to benefit Christ the King Food Pantry. It provides essential support to Mashpee families year-round. So they're placing small shopping baskets in local offices and businesses, and what they're doing is collecting canned goods, non-perishables, and volunteers will pick those donations up weekly through Thanksgiving, and then they will do that again at the end of December to help restock the pantry. Again, as Madam Chair stated, this is the busiest time of year for a lot of food banks, and so with layoffs and reduction of benefits, it's really important that we be as supportive as possible to our town, our residents. So if you can donate, keep an eye out for those baskets and small local businesses and offices. And also, they are going to do a fundraiser to support further, so they'll be doing a fundraiser at the Mashpee Farmers Market. That's going to take place on November 16th from 11:00 to 2:00, it's at the Clam Jam. So ongoing support and commitment as you can, as you are able, through a very tough time for local families and residents would be greatly appreciated. Again, that fundraiser will take place on November 16th at the Clam Jam for the Mashpee Farmers Market, and that's 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I also have a few resources that were sent you should have received if you have a child in the Mashpee Public School system. You can check your email, there was official correspondence sent out from the new superintendent, Dr. Connors. There's a whole list of local food banks, and she also sent out a family support request form. So it's really simple, you can go on the link in your email and click on Request Form and put your information is, that information will be confidential with the school, and hopefully that, you know, people know their town is supporting them and that families should not go hungry. In that email also, again, there's a list of not just Mashpee resources but Capewide resources, so you can go ahead and look into those as well, and the links for each of those resources is right in the email from Dr. Connors.
Thank you very much. John?
Just add one more to that, actually, as a reminder, our very own Mashpee Rec is doing the 11th Annual Fill the Van on November 20th, and donations go to both Christ the King and Falmouth Service Center, and the community donations can be dropped off at the Fire Department, Police Department, Library, Rec Center, and I believe it's COA's...
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging. So that's also happening, and that's an annual event, so I think everyone is banding together to do their part, which is great.
Thank you. Anything else? Could I have a motion then to allow, to authorize the Town Manager to utilize town resources at his discretion to support, to support both Christ the King and any other ways we can alleviate food insecurity?
Second.
So move.
All right. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Okay. Public comment for any item not on the agenda. I have Terry Ronhawke.
Good evening, Terry Ronhawke, 104 DeGrasse Road. I just want to take my first two seconds and thank Madam Chair and the Board for helping the community during this difficult time. As a person at Christ the King, I know that they're trying to hold back the flood of need, and so it's great to hear that the whole town is working together to support them, support everyone in the town that's going to be affected. I'm here tonight to talk about some concerns that I have about the Mashpee National Resources Department. As a taxpayer, I'm currently concerned about some of the ways this department is using taxpayer funds and some of the policies and procedures that they're doing and wondering about how this is being overseen. My first concern started last week, Woods Hole. My husband worked in Woods Hole all day, I think it was Tuesday, and there was a big going on there with the, they were bringing that sailboat that unfortunately had been part of a fire and a family tragedy, and that there was news reporters there, the Department of Environmental Protection was there, Mashpee Fire had pumper trucks, and the Department of Natural Resources was there with all their watercraft resources in the water. And so we were just concerned about if there was an emergency in Mashpee and needed a watercraft. I know we spent a lot of money on that boat that was outfitted for water rescue from, through the Department of Natural Resources, something like probably $85,000 was eventually spent on that. Then, when I went to check on the website, there was another posting by the Department of Natural Resources about how they had, on October 31st, I believe, when we had high winds, they towed a sailboat, a private watercraft, that had come off a mooring to another mooring in the high winds with, and then they pumped out another personal watercraft and towed that as well. My concern is, as a taxpayer, we are towing personal, I mean, the Coast Guard doesn't even tow personal watercraft, and if, you know, I don't understand why town resources are being used to move personal watercraft. And, you know, I understand that often our emergency personnel have to risk their lives to go out into conditions and rescue people, but these were watercraft that had no personnel on them, no persons were there, it was just personal property. And then again, the resources of the town, taxpayers have invested, oh, sorry, that have, my hearing aids, that have invested in this watercraft for this department. So, and these are, these are not, this is not hearsay, this is all posted on their Facebook page. If you go on their Facebook page, you can see they've posted pictures and talked about, explained all this on their, on their website. And I understand that the operation in Woods Hole was a drill, but then again, I don't know why the Department of Natural Resources had to have all their personnel there. The other concern I have is that, you know, we appropriated at Town Meeting $1.3 million, I believe, I'm not exactly positive on that, for two condos for the Department of Natural Resources. And then now, in my neighborhood, they've just cleared on Great Neck Road South, no, on Red Brook Road, they just cleared a huge space there, and I know that was appropriated at Town Meeting for the Department of Natural Resources to have a parking area for their watercraft and whatever other needs they have, because the condos that they have, that we've spent a lot of town taxpayer money on, they can't store outside of the condos. So I understand that, but now I'm wondering if, because they can't store outdoor watercraft there, if maybe we still need to have two $1.3 million condos for this department. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Barbie?
I'm here as the Chair of the Human Services Committee, and as such, I want to thank Frank Fantasia and all of his crew at Christ the King Food Bank for all the work that they're doing. I think it's really important to keep, to keep things going there, and he said they're getting good support, so I'm glad we have other ways of doing that support. But I'm mostly here because our local paper, our wonderful local paper, did have an article about the new program with the Human Services and Health Board called Credible Mind, and it's a new program that just got started. It is a mental health online product, and the Human Services Committee and the Board of Health have been working now for several months putting this all together. I noticed that out on the front table out there, there were a couple of flyers about that, and that information is now available on the Human Services Department website, there's a little click for the Credible Mind, and I would urge everybody to check into it because it's a resource that would be available to everyone, and it's something that we've invested as a town to do, and I hope that we will see some results from that. So again, I urge people to go on to the Human Services website on the Town webpage and check out the Credible Mind link that's on there, and also, I have posted some of that on Facebook so that people, more people have access to it. And I really want to thank Zachary Seaberry from the Board of Health and Gail Wilson from Human Services for pulling this all together. It's a really, it's an important program and hopefully will be very useful to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that answered my other question about what's going on on Red Brook Road, so thank you. The clear cut there, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fantasia, you're here with us, would you like to provide public comment?
Oh, good. Gilmore, who is our pantry manager, he doesn't live in Mashpee, but he wished he did. He really knows his way around the Cape and is a key, key part of the management team at the pantry. I can tell you that it's been quite an interesting couple of weeks. I've been volunteering there for, in the pantry for 25 years, and I've never experienced anything like this. Last Wednesday, we had a 30% increase in the number of families that we served. That's a big number. We opened early and we closed late, and we managed to get everybody through. As they were going, we'd served 160 families on Wednesday morning. As they were going through, one of my concerns was that we were not going to have enough food, but we did. The crew stepped to the plate, nobody complained, they dug in, and we made it happen. Luckily, this happened at a time of the year when I'm planning for the holidays, for Thanksgiving and for Christmas and holidays like that, we planned well ahead for that occurrence. It's the busiest time of the year for us. We had just, last week, at George's, under his watch, picked up 3,500 pounds of frozen turkeys up at the Greater Boston Food Bank, and George went up with a couple of our trucks, and they had to hand-load 3,500 pounds of turkey. I don't know if you've ever done anything like that, but they come four in a box, and the box weighs about 80 pounds, so I didn't go. George is much younger than I, he can deal with the other guys. I don't know what the future holds with this government shutdown. My biggest concern is the availability of food. I was on a conference call with the Greater Boston Food Bank today with about 102 other pantries in eastern Massachusetts, and they've assured us that they have plenty of food, and we're not going to have to suffer any cutbacks in the immediate future. They told me they have $3.5 million worth of food in inventory today. We have not experienced any shortfalls in our orders. Boston Food Bank, as I've told this Board before, supplies 90% of our inventory, but now, under the present conditions, we've explored alternative supply chain possibilities, and George and I are working on that as we speak. The problem with that is that we stumbled on one national company that's willing to donate food to us, and we're working that side of the street. Others have asked us to pay for it, and that's okay too, but if we can get it at a wholesale price, I'm in a position to do that. One of the things that we're trying to do now is raise funds through gift cards. So people on this Board have asked me what they could do, one of the things you could do, rather than just, it's not all about cans of soup, believe me when I tell you. If, one of the, one of the things you can do is, people want to donate if they can give gift cards to the, from the local supermarkets in $25 increments, and then based on the size of the family and the needs of the family, we can dole it out in those increments. That helps us in two ways, because if I have to be forced into dealing outside of the Greater Boston Food Bank, I'm going to need funds to buy from some of these other suppliers. So I could use it for that, and I could also not ever have to say to a client, "I don't have enough food for you." The worst I can do is say, "Here's 100 bucks, here's $150, I don't have the food, but I can at least give you the money to do it," so I never have to say no. The phones have, we've gotten a different kind of call on our hotline the last couple of weeks. People have called to, because they're, you talk about food insecurity, they're food insecure, they don't know what's going to happen. George and I were at the pantry on last Sunday taking care of a woman that works in the town in the healthcare business. She was a little bit frantic because she didn't have food for her and her family. George and I filled up a couple of carts and put it in her trunk, and off she went. She's coming, she's coming back this Wednesday to register as a member of the pantry so we can take care of her. We registered 20 new families last Wednesday. You know, percentage-wise, that's a big deal for us, so it's not business as usual, but I think we're okay. The response for the community has been overwhelming. It's been overwhelming, and George and I communicate daily, and he brought in almost $6,000 today in donations, and over the weekend, just by hanging around, I came up with, what, about $2,500, and over lunch, and so the Chamber of Commerce has been in contact with me, and they, they're doing wonderful stuff. And as I said, it's not all, it's not all about food. We have a special menu that we give out... We have a special member, menu that we give out. We gave it to the Chairman of the Chamber and other people in the community, some of the service clubs. And its items, some of them are non-food items, but it's things that we have to pay for, non-food items, that if you get these donated, I can use that money to put towards food. And we have a pretty sophisticated inventory control system here. I can not only, I can only judge the turnover in the inventory that we have and to see what we need. George is kind of the expert on that. But we also can rate it nutritionally. The Greater Boston Food Bank has a nutrition rating, a color code, a nutrition rating. And we built our system to mirror the nutritional value. So I, when he puts in an order, I can look at the outcome and see how we rate on that chart for nutritional value. And that's about, you have any?
Yeah, just briefly, very briefly, I know we're over our time limit here. It is important, these, the gift cards are very, very important. And what we've been able to take in from our local supermarkets and donations is a wonderful thing, because we're limited to 6,000 pounds a week from Boston. Now, when we were serving 120 people a week, that was fine, but 6,000 pounds isn't going to cut it, and that's the most they can do for us. So these, these food drives that are held and the gift cards, the donations are tremendously important to our operation. So we'd like to thank you very much for your time tonight.
I can tell you this, you know, nothing in life is guaranteed, as we know. But I'm going to give you a guarantee tonight. Nobody in this town is going to go hungry on my watch. I almost said by hook up by crook, but I don't want to say.
Thank you very, very much, both of you.
Thank you, folks.
We appreciate it. And move to, oh, no, I'm having myself, sorry. Additional topics, we don't, liaison reports.
Yeah, he's still waiting to come to add a member, but that's about it.
Okay.
He couldn't make the meeting.
Thank you.
None at this time.
Okay. Trace?
Yeah, I have a couple. Mashpee Chamber of Commerce, again, planning for the annual parade. If you do have it in your spirit or in your schedule, in both, they are looking for volunteers. They're also looking for some supports if you can, for sponsorships as well. It's a wonderful annual event, and it just brings the holiday cheer to the town. Also, we have Mashpee Public Schools, they're undergoing mission, vision, values, and strategic planning, which is really exciting. They're in a gap year right now. They have essentially a new administration and lots of new hires. So I'm on the planning committee for that. They just held a focus group last week for families, so parents and guardians are able to be engaged in the process, which is great. So keep an eye out for that. From Mashpee Public School Systems, there are different focus groups as the strategic plan gets refined as the months go by. And I also had Credible Minds. I just want to do an extra plug from, "Thank You for Sharing," Lynn Barbie. So for the Behavioral Health Portal for the Town of Mashpee, there's also a, if you make your account by November 30th, there's also a lottery to win $100 gift card. And that's by going on to the Credible Minds website and creating an account by November 30th. And I already went poking around, and there's, there's a great toolkit. There's multiple toolkits in there and different resources as well, without even making an account. So I highly recommend folks go check that out.
Super. Thank you. John?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have, oh, water quality updates? I don't think there's anything since the election for water quality updates. Town manager updates?
In regards to the luxury transfer tax, the summary is it will require local buy-in through town meeting. Funds will be returned to affordable year-round housing trusts of the town in which the sale occurred. No more than 10% of the funds collected from each town will be retained to offset administrative costs and for regional housing initiatives. The minimum threshold will be $1 million. With towns having the ability to set a higher threshold when adopting the fee, the first million of the sale price of the home will not be subject to the fee. And the Home Rule petition should allow towns the opportunity to adopt a fee between 0.5% and 4%. Some of the comments relative to the towns throughout Barnstable County, I think the focus is the spending of hundreds of millions of tax dollars to address water quality, and what happens in one town has implications for the tax burden in other towns. For example, Mashpee watershed, or shares of watersheds with Sandwich, Falmouth, and Barnstable, any development within the watershed will have implications for water quality in the Town of Mashpee, and thus implications for Mashpee taxpayers. So that's a little summary on the luxury transfer tax. I know that Mark Forrest left me a message this afternoon. I think maybe this is something he wanted to discuss. And full disclosure, I didn't get an opportunity to get back to him because I was tied up in meetings. But any additional information will be brought forward to the Board.
And if I may, there could, that is on the Assembly's agenda for Wednesday evening, so there could possibly be a vote at that time. I don't know if there will be, but there could be. So if Board members have comments, you could send them to your Assembly delegate.
By what date?
Before Wednesday. Okay.
And the only other thing I would add, and I don't know if the Vice Chair wants to comment on it, is the Charter Review Committee. I don't know if you want to comment on that, but since you're a Select Board Member, I would defer to you.
It came to our attention that there were some issues around bringing warrant articles before the town meeting, and then kind of the sequential timeline of doing additional work. And so the Charter Review Committee decided to conclude our business and put forward a final report and submit articles for the May warrant for approval to adopt the revisions that were considered at our last meeting back in May, and for final approval. And then in the report, we will include items that we were considering pursuing further and as recommendations to the next iteration of changes at a future date. And there may be some other items incorporated into that final report.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, sir.
That's fine.
I just thought.
Hope I did it justice.
You did. That's pretty impressive off the top you had.
Okay.
One item I had for Town Manager, I think it was in the minutes, refresh my memory, with the Joint Housing Trust meeting, there were some questions that we were going to pose on the structure of a potential 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(25).
Yes.
And some other kind of information, we're looking forward to move that along.
Yes. And I have a call from the gentleman from Southport, whose name escapes me right now.
Michael Sparks.
Sparks, Mr. Sparks, thank you. I owe him a call as well, and I will hopefully get to call him tomorrow. But I think he's got some information for me.
Excellent.
Okay. Excellent. All right. I think next is, oh, you have it.
I motion to enter into the Executive Session in accordance with past General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to Michael Kanata versus Town of Mashpee, Kanata II, or Kanata II, Superior Court, Civil Action Number 2372CV00119. If an open meeting may have, may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and not to reconvene in open session.
I declare that this would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body.
Second.
No, it's usually good. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Trace?